So, good evening. This is the town meeting study committee engagement subcommittee meeting of October, sorry, December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. It's seven o'clock and they start the meeting. So tonight's agenda is two things, brainstorming ways to, I'll take role in a second. Uh brainstorming ways to improve improvement engagement, uh and then and we'll talk, Chase will talk about what that means. And then the second piece is going to be looking at some of those ideas to see what what feels promising or has potential. We're a subcommittee. I'll take role just to record who the attendees are. Alice Kaufman is here, Karin Patel is here, Chase Thompson.
Thompson.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I get stupid all the time, right? Chase Thompson is here, Eric Moore is here, Snagger is here, Carmen Rios, Xoficio is here, and Andrew Andrew is here as well. Uh we don't have any plan for formal public comment, though, uh in terms of the structure of today's meeting, I think Chase listed that he wants to welcome uh public participation, so I'll leave that to you orchestrate that as we get going.
Yep.
Uh and we did perk for tonight. I'm not gonna volunteer, I'm sorry. Parsha Patel will perk the seat there. Uh so with that, uh I'm gonna go to our first agenda item, brainstorming ways to improve engagement, and Chase, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Thank you.
Awesome. Was everybody on the last meeting when we kind of went through this? Folks in the public, would it be helpful for a like a quick overview on what we discussed last time and why we formed the subcommittee?
Yeah, it should.
Yeah, okay. But operate out of the assumption that's a yes. Okay, great. So I'll move very quickly. We are trying to solve for the problems of just getting more people and better representation at town meeting. We think that there might be some Concordians who are not aware of town meeting and what uh a specific purpose of it is. This is just a little bit of a cohort circle analysis that we've done. Ned had some really good insight on this. Folks who attend, folks who want to but can't, and folks who are aware but don't feel like it is a priority for them. And we are solving for the fourth circle, those friends who may not be aware at all. And that's really what we're gonna discuss. All right, we can skip through this. And for thought experiment purposes, we we threw this out last time, just asking the question of without any history or context of town meeting, like how would you go about driving a large and diverse cohort of folks from the town to an event? And I think if we stay in that mindset, we'll be able to throw a lot of ideas at the wall, many of which likely will not stick, some will. And what we'll do with those ideas is uh really condense them down into a little bit of a form. I'll actually show you what I put together on that. The idea was, if we throw a bunch of ideas out, what we'll be able to do is put each one that we agree is worth really pursuing into a little bit more, this is an example of leveraging local community groups. I'll put, I would do the first one coming out of this meeting and then send it to everybody. And so my hope is at the end of this, maybe we can split up the ideas, go a little bit deeper, give an overview of the next steps, pros and cons, expected workload, budget, et cetera. Probably add a couple more categories, but the goal would be two, three weeks from now, we have, you know, some number of these sort of short form documents put together, so we have an idea of what we really wanna go pursue. And then we can hand that off to the select board. I think transparently, it's not super realistic to hand something to the select board where we're not gonna be willing to do some portion of the work. There may be things like that slot really well into people in the town and aren't doing them. My personal expectation was that if I was really passionate about one of these ideas, I was probably gonna be owning some percentage of the work.
Well, one of the things that I think will come across is there are other groups in town doing things, like um the Red Tavern is now starting a civic engagement
Survey.
They're doing a survey, but I think they wanna conduct like a I'm not gonna get to the word either, but anyway, so there are groups in town that I think will will probably definitely lend us certain solutions.
That would be ideal.
And that's how we're gonna do women voters.
And you want voters, definitely. And that's how we can kind of maximize the the reach, I think.
That's, yeah, no, transparently, I have no idea what those groups of people are, so if we feel like where there's things, it's like, hey, let's go bring that to them. That was actually a part of leveraging local community groups. I had the idea of like who could go and volunteer for some of these things, so.
So.
Yeah, yeah, everybody jump in. Yeah, I I we don't have to do like.
So I mean, you know, the goal in a way, intermediate goal, is to have good stories, credible, interesting stories to tell. Then we can figure out what audience wants to pick those up.
Yeah.
It might be this, as Kristen was saying, might be this select board goes for it, uh it might be that it goes into a report. You know, anything good that we do is gonna go into the report, we know that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But it might be like, and other groups might wanna run with it, but but that's a step beyond the first step.
Yeah, and I'd be curious everyone's take on like how flushed out these need to be by the time they're going into a report or going to the select board. I would index towards the more flushed out, the better, but obviously, there's a there's a reality of like, I don't think you're really gonna know until you get in it.
We can also approach it as like short, medium, long term, right? Maybe there's something that needs longer time to see. Um and then there's other things that are gonna be like, let's try them this year and see what happens.
Get to watch me kind of live type all night. All right. So originally, and I'm not tied to this in any way, but originally with the way we had talked about this was kind of three probably oversimplified buckets. How do we get better awareness of the town meeting itself to folks who are not aware? And then once we make people aware, how do they, how do we make them want to prioritize it against their lives? And then the third bucket is, once we get them to attend, how do we get them to want to attend in the future? And net promotion is talk about it with their friends and family. So I thought that might be a good way to just kind of start looking at ideas. We did not spend very much time on these last time. This was me very, very quickly jotting down ideas and awareness. So let's pause here. I'll let folks read and then I'll open it up for more that we can add to this.
Do we know why um why people in your age group are not aware?
That's a good question. I don't.
Because we have the the big signs, you know, like the flashing signs we have. I don't know if we have a banner.
We do have a banner.
I I I I think it's in the PTG newsletters.
So I I would hazard a guess, and that is that um there's a lot of people who live in Concord who didn't grow up in this part of the country.
Yep.
And town meeting is a form of local government that is unique to the New England states. And so if you grew up anywhere outside of New England, you have had no exposure to town meeting as a form of like local government. So you're probably expecting that there is a town council or a city council and that, you know, I mean, if you live in the city of Boston, do you have any idea who's on this on the city council? Like, most people don't, right? Um in the neighborhoods, people begin to care because they have neighborhood issues that are maybe not being addressed and so forth, but but, you know, I think that's one of the primary reasons.
One. Is there like a town meeting movie, like a movie that has town meeting in it that?
There's a novel.
What's the novel?
Oh, it's really bad. I started to call murder at town meeting.
Was it written by a, was it written by a former moderator?
It was written by a former moderator, and there were, someone stumbled upon this book, and then there were a whole bunch of us moderators who read this book and hooked up to discuss it, yeah.
Among your friend groups.
Yeah.
Most of them have never heard of it.
Yeah.
Uh it would be great if you can just ask them why.
Yeah.
And the reason I ask is everybody gets the bridge. Whether you read the bridge or not, at least if you look at the front page, there's been a mention of town meeting last year, unsurprised, or maybe they've missed that one or not. But it would be really interesting to find out, because I think without, I think that partly plays into it. I think even folks, I mean, you grew up, right?
I grew up in Weston, and I had to call my mom, who's like, did you ever go to a town meeting? How was I?
So you grew up, exactly. So I I think that's part of it, but until we understand like the multiple, yeah, three or four reasons.
Yeah.
Or in any
Well, I can tell, like, personal experience than when I did speak with a couple about it. If they were like at a high level of layer of the term town meeting, like to your point, being in places.
Yeah.
They had no, and myself included, no context to what that meant. Like, I had no idea if that's a thing you vote at that were approving budget, were approving articles, you know what I mean, like? I Weston had Westin Town Green. That was like where everyone would bring their families and there was a live, there's live music. To me, that could have been the same thing. Like, I would have had no idea that there was a difference between those two.
Well, if if I I would also note that the term town meeting has really been taken over by um politicians and candidates for office to mean something really different. Where they're having a town hall discussion or a town meeting style discussion and
Right.
that it and you know, it means something really different. It means they've gathered a bunch of people together and they're gonna take questions and answer them. That's what that means.
Yeah.
But it's not a legislature.
Yeah. I guess someone were, you know, if I wasn't involved in this group and they were convincing me, trying to convince me to do that, I would need first the foundation of like, what even is this thing?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? There would be no context of.
Where would you go for that?
I think we have to create it.
Well, we.
Of like what, like vehicle?
Yeah, like channel. Yeah, where would you go?
TV.
So where would you?
I I wouldn't seek it out. That's the thing, so you have to.
Yeah, so you wouldn't seek it out to make it.
Yeah.
So a group that could be on here is realtors. We have a welcome to Concord packet. Uh and there's no mention of town meeting in it, but I
Is that true?
I I couldn't find it in there.
I didn't even know we had a welcome to Concord packet. I never thought about it.
Seven generations.
Wait, wait.
I don't think we got those.
Um but but, I mean, it's twenty six pages, so it's, but I mean, it has things like the horse school and after school parent things that would like be, you know, so it would be a little bit of everything. So, you know, I would say we we could certainly have a welcome wagon, or at a minimum, we've got this online thing and we could get the realtor community when they say, you know, welcome to the neighborhood. They do something to this, but but it doesn't have anything in here. It has stuff about preschool and things like that, but it doesn't have, I think, something about voting, but I don't think it has about town meeting.
Yeah, I think like, probably the easiest way to capture my attention and folks in it is short form video.
Okay.
And what I mean by that is like, if in the bridge you had a QR code and it literally was just like the town's about to approve a hundred and something million dollars of your money and all your neighbors are gonna vote on it. What is town meeting and why should you go? And there was a QR code above it, and then it was a two minute video. Like that would probably, I also like the QR code thing, because that's the kind of thing we get hands to anybody else, if they can put on their social media, or they could, you know, you can put it on these flyers. Because otherwise, I think it's really, it's too complex to get across in three sentences, I think, easily or effectively, but if you can get someone to commit to a short form video.
Something that you said is really intriguing to me, and that's the language we use to describe all this has to be changed. Because we speak in a very formal language of town meeting as a sacred institution, that a lot of people don't even understand. So how sacred can it be? I mean, we have to change the way we discuss it, and you're right, you start with what is the problem? Your neighbors are all going to vote on this. This is something big in the schools, and my kids are about to get there.
That's literally how I explained it to them.
Exactly.
I was like, Brad, you know how you're super pissed about your real estate bill?
Yeah.
It's because everyone's voting at this thing, they've donated tons of money every single year. And it was like, oh, that's important. But I was like, yeah.
So you gotta say, but that's the thing, you have to say it in that way.
You know, we'll we'll just do the video, which is harsh, I'll say that over and over.
I'll take some beauty from every town.
Okay, so.
Some of us.
So what I hear about it on social media and video, short form video.
Yep.
And um and then the language has to be appropriate to either younger progressives or new, new to Concord uh new to New England even uh person.
Does citizen legislature capture it better?
That would confuse me more. I thought.
Yeah, because you don't wanna use legislature. I mean, basically, it's a meeting to get together and decide where the money's gonna go and where it's gonna come from. It's as simple as that.
Yeah, it's the household budget for the town. Yeah.
Yeah, describing it just like, ask where you vote, that's what feels the most clear to me. I didn't know what town meeting was when I started working in local government, because I grew up in the city. And I was surrounded by cities, so no one had town meetings, so I didn't know where it was either, but it's like, it should where you vote, like, that's the easiest way.
We've got to argue and vote.
Yeah, to explain it.
I'd love to think of things that aren't so money centric. I think that needs to be like the number one thing, but if you get to capture some other things too.
Now zoning is our approach, you know, I mean, there's there's not a lot that shapes the experience and the look and feel of a community like zoning laws, and those are all um passed by town meeting.
It's where we go to determine Congress, the future of talk Congress, town character.
Sure did.
Yes, that's a word from them.
Well, thanks to questions that were asked in a vision Concord. What do you think about? What it, where do you want to be in such and such a place? This is your chance to have a voice. You come and vote, you say where, what you want. But it's kind of been really clearly directed as, you know, the the driver that ca- captures somebody's interest. And then unfortunately, I don't know that we have time to make all this happen before this year's town meeting. It's a process of engagement. It doesn't happen overnight. It'd be great if we could, we can try a few things.
Yeah.
But I worry that it's, we're just getting off the ground. I'm thinking about how to engage people. We have to take the longer view, because our learning process is more than Q and A's in the paper or a QR code that gets passed around. Um it's it's all of it, and it takes a while to execute all of those and get the language right.
Yeah.
And then to test it, did the language work? Did something happen?
Well, the the testing, I I don't know that we need to test a bunch of stuff, to be honest. There's sort of, I love the idea of a QR code. Put a QR code, get somebody, Eric Dahlberg, somebody to do a five minute, three minute TikTok, get up the dancing, and see how many people.
Oh, no, with the dancing, absolutely, yeah.
Actually, I heard that word.
But because, no, you're right, I don't see it. So, because you build on, like, what can you do now quickly to just get people in the seats?
Yeah.
And then next year, you can kind of worry about what else can you tack on? Do we do enough or not?
Short form is really easy to do if if what we walk away with is here's three or four different short form assets. Two videos, you know, something written, something emailed that's got photos with writing. You can put that content in many different places very quickly.
And for multiple people, right? So Eric, maybe the school chairs, you get the select board for some. It's hitting up different people and it's not just when you reach a phone.
So um let me ask the production question. Are these things that you're gonna shoot with your cell phone? Or are these things that you're gonna go to the Minuteman Media um studio and I mean, there's a studio, we can use it for free, and you gotta learn how to use the equipment.
They are really willing to help to, they really would love to do more in the community. They tell us that all the time.
Yeah, best case scenario, we engage some cohort of the town to do it. I was thinking high school students. Because the rea- if you said, Chase, go make this happen and give us a video in one week, I would use AI, it would be decent. You just give it a bunch of photos of Concord, you give it a talking script, it pieces the entire thing together. You can be able to upload it now and it's costing ten bucks, right? Okay.
So um and and I'll just tell you some, you know, things we've done before, you know, the League of Women Voters has um done this uh you know, kind of, kind of almost before we had um a YouTube connection for the local access channel to the website, there'd be a lot of content that went on the local access channel about town meeting. So I mean, two or three times I was on there and, you know, Diane Proctor from the League of Women Voters was like interviewing me with a bunch of questions about this thing or that thing, and you know, like this thing. It got a lot of people watched it, but a lot of people is like less than heard, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a wrong start, maybe, you know.
Like, right, it it, no, that's true. I was just gonna say that.
So here's.
Those people already come.
Yeah, exactly.
A different idea. You send postcards out to every household in town uh asking for, I'll I'll say, board captains, right? People who live in a neighborhood who are willing to take leadership and talk to their neighbors about town meeting. So, you know, so, you know, one in ten or one, you know, one in twenty people say, yeah. We look at, we map the addresses into the the different areas. And then we've got somebody from each neighborhood who's ready to go out um with information that we provide and go to door, sort of, you know, go door to door and socialize town meeting.
We did that right before Y two K.
Yeah.
And we did it as a Y two K exercise, where the whole town was split up into neighborhoods, there were neighborhood captains. And my neighborhood captain was really diligent and collected everyone's emails and, you know, uh and 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 would activate it when like it snowed, and we would get an email from our neighborhood captain saying like, check on your neighbors, you know? And um and I think it was just as active in a lot of other neighborhoods, but now that's going back twenty five years ago, but, you know, we were all afraid when Y two K was coming that like the world was gonna stop. And uh
Almost care well, you know, addresses, right?
Yeah, well, then except that part of the point was to make it very locally organized so that you could just, you know, your responsibility was the person on this side and the person on that side, and it would go down a block in that way, so.
Yeah, everybody gets like fifty homes or something that they're responsible for.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you've done canvassing for a campaign, it would be like that too.
So that requires a very large round effort, where you have to do your community organizing and finding people who feel comfortable knocking on their neighbor's doors and introducing themselves. So that's an effort in itself, and that's, you know, when people get frustrated by the special interest articles of town meeting, citizen petitions, that's what brings people out. When you go door to door, you go talk to people, you hold public meetings, or whatever you call them. You have coffees.
Yeah.
When you're one on one with people, it brings them in, just like you said. If you say, my neighbors, you know, but all my neighbors are talking about this, you understand what's going on in the schools. Other people get engaged by your enthusiasm. It's harder to do it when you're doing it at a higher level, trying to reach the whole town. But that was the, one of the original ideas behind representatives town meeting. You'd have it set up, but there you have
Yeah.
you're not wards, you have your district.
Yeah.
Right.
And you were supposed to at at the beginning of the idea, you know, for canvass your folks and provide information and be out there and know what to go and bother by.
The Carlyle moderator, Wayne.
Davis.
Davis, thank you. Uh talked about how in Carlyle, when they were looking at a a sort of a a bit, an envisioning project for the future of Carlyle development, they had success in sort of these different neighborhood or what do you call it, kind of kitchen table conversations about development possibilities. It's like that that worked out well for them.
So let me ask, in your respective neighborhoods, I know in my neighborhood, there's an email list. And I've got, you know, like all kind of all around, you know, like certain circumference, I've got everybody's emails, and we do communicate with each other. For a while, we had a block party. The organizer of the block party got tired of doing it and no one picked up the slack, but but, you know, we know who each other are, and we do have a mechanism to communicate with each other. So do you have that in your, you don't have that, do you?
Just around a couple houses around this, around Main Street, so there are a couple houses around us.
Right.
Yeah, we're sort of in the country.
Tax, taxing.
Right, well, you you have it pretty far apart from where you are, right? How about you?
Tax.
But you've got your dad group, right?
Well, yeah, I'm, we're very tied into like the preschool, mill dam, the show that broke through elementary scene. My neighborhood itself, just my street, seven homes, you know, small road, tax. And then by actual neighborhood, the Throw Hills neighborhood, no, no. But somebody said, here's some postcards. Go knock on fifty doors on Saturday and hand them out, and it's a little, you know, QR code and a little snippet and we'll come to the town meeting. By the way, we're gonna be talking about the Superfund site that's right there.
Yeah.
You probably really care about that. I know I do. I think that would definitely work.
Right.
But that would be, if you can do that, that's gonna be way more impactful than any social media short form.
How about your neighborhood?
Uh we've got a, it's it's dense, so I can go knock on doors, but um
Well, they open.
Yeah, not for me, man. You gotta bring your league here, off the league. Gotta bring a kid with you. So you've got this text, the text thing, the the text, whatever it's called.
Yeah, you got a little chain.
Yeah, yeah, a little chain. No, we used to have the thing called the Polar Stroller, which is a um like a dinner, uh a February dinner sent out to people's houses and everything like that, so there's yeah, oh, so so they just email us with that as well.
Yeah.
And we could pay people, you know, if you wanna be your block captain or whatever, you could pay fifty bucks to go out and publicize town meeting.
Yeah, where we get that budget.
Well, and and I do have one, and I think it might have been lost over from Y two K, if I understand correctly. And um but I mean, the other people we can engage is um like the the AI commission, trying to be like we belong in Concord, and so like the Red Tavern, it's fun to generate this belonging. And, you know, knowing your neighbors is a really good step to belonging. So I think that we can kind of capitalize on you know, trying to get to know our neighbors. And and uh this is one thing we could duck out with our neighbors.
And do you think that'd be really cool, like, again, going back to if we have the right just list of assets? You could say, hey, we're asking you to volunteer, and here's all the assets you need. Just go, can you knock these doors, you know, or tell us which neighborhoods you're.
These are also things that we can build on, right? So maybe we can't do it now in December for, is it May or June?
June, the first.
Maybe we can, but even if we do half, fifty percent, you build on it for the after.
Yeah.
That's right.
What's the?
In the, in the, in the, right.
What if we asked people to um, we solicited volunteers to hold a neighborhood um town meeting coffee? That, you know, um that, you know, what the committee or the moderator, League of Women Voters, would, you know, put together like some general information. And if you agree you're gonna hold a coffee, you got the general information, and then you just invited a bunch of people over. And you talk about what's town meeting, how's it work, and and here's some, you know, here's some kind of highlights of stuff that's coming up this next town meeting and um and you get to invite your neighbors over, you can make a potluck, you can do whatever you want.
So it's like you're running through select boards or something like that, except it's a town meeting coffee.
That's the approach that Mothers Afternoon took. When they started up in Concord, they had, you know, neighborhood coffees, somebody, and they didn't, they just said, we really care about the environment, you know? So they started not with town meeting and talk about, you know, joint government, it's really about what's important to you.
Gas leaks.
Why did you come?
It was like gas leaks and.
Exactly.
Yep.
So is that, is that engagement driven by a particular issue at town meeting? You whatever it is, right? Save our schools, save save our whatever.
It's mostly.
Yes.
Or is it something abstract?
That the road district resigning.
Yep.
Yeah, it probably would be beneficial to get like a top three for the current town meeting. You know what I mean? Because again, you're like that.
Oh, three issues?
Yeah, like, these are the things that most people are gonna have one or two of these that they would find interesting. You know, because again, if you're going back to short form, I'm probably not gonna read all that text.
Right.
But if you were like, hey, on this date, we're gonna talk about thirty things, but these three, everybody in town cares a lot about. That would be a really kickback, like, like way to pull me in. Because once I learned about town being, like with that foundation, then the first thing I care about is like, what would be?
Why, why should I go?
Yeah.
You go because you really care about what's happening in the lack of preschool, where we.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So am I talking to a select board member? I mean, you know, so so just think about it, right? I mean, uh I I there's some issues that that I feel, you know, I I would like to know more about. I'd like to be able to express my voice directly to somebody in power. So is it, you know, do we try to recruit select board members to go to these coffees so people can talk to them, or or?
There must be the old people.
Shortly before I was on the board, there was um uh I replaced Denny McIntyre. I took Denny McIntyre's seat on the board of select, and while she was on the board, they had started a practice of having like Saturday morning coffees, and nobody came.
Yeah.
They had like a whole bunch of Saturday morning, contact in the select board will, you know, will, you know, like engage us on issues and.
And we tried and some of this left it, like this was, we went to the school because each of the school parent groups has monthly meetings apparently.
Yeah.
I was told by chairs, Alexa, nobody really shows up.
Yeah.
So we tried as a finance committee to get, hey, we'll come talk to you guys. Educate you, and we didn't have any, because you said it sounded worse, nobody shows up. I took it apart myself after, not last time, I mean, the one before that. In between to try to organize a townwide forum hosted by legal women voters. I went to the business groups, I went to the legal women voters, I went to the Concord Bridge, all of them turned me down.
Saying there wasn't enough interest?
They didn't wanna get, they didn't want, I, there was no adequate real reasons given. I think Bridge. Bridge said they didn't want it to be a government, they didn't wanna get any government.
They didn't want it to be a lead.
Okay.
And.
I was just looking for sponsors, like I just, I was, I wasn't gonna ask them to run it.
But to get, get attention.
I was, exactly. And I was asking the same thing of the lead, have a non-party, have the issues presented of what's gonna be important? Zero. The business community, nothing. So I'm just telling you what I experienced, maybe it was because I was the incoming chair of the finance, maybe they thought it was gonna be skewed. I wrote up a half a page document describing a series of forums, maybe two or three, nothing.
I think.
Just what we're up against.
I I, we tried as well with the Concord Bridge, going to the the um parent groups. Because we thought, let's reach out to parent groups and see if they have kids who, that maybe they wanted to help these citizen reporters. You know, no one's going on to schools, you didn't wanna tell us where to go. We never started meeting with.
Have the high school kids take the minutes, publish, get them reported to the school committees, the select board and the finance meeting. Of what the citizens are telling them about their priorities, nothing, yeah.
So, different idea.
Just FYI.
The youth sports weekend where each team, it's, they're like pickup teams, right? So, you know, for all, all the kids age, you know, X to Y, youth sports weekend and the teams are different articles. So like. Your kid's in article seven, right? And they have cheer, you know, and so, but I'm just saying, right, families, it's some awareness, it's not meaning exists. And, you know, some toy issue that you get to run with. Well, I, the reality, I like neighborhood coffees because I think it's the kind of thing that would work well for a certain demographic. I would definitely not go to a neighborhood coffee only because I'm, I don't have the time. And there may be people, I shouldn't say that, the odds of it working for my schedule are tops twenty percent.
Right, so so this is kind of the circular argument that we keep having. So the next thing you're talking about is prioritization. And so, you know, we can, we can do all this awareness and, you know, many things have been tried and we can try new things. What about prioritization? Like, who, who is going to, oh, I know about it, but I'm still not gonna come? Cause that's what would happen to me. I would be at at all the, you know, at all the school. Tell me, come up next week, give it to everybody, I would just tell everybody it's on the.
Yeah.
And then they think of other things they have to do except.
Yeah.
Like I could say it in the next.
The reason I like the neighborhood door knocking. And again, I think we're, if we went to parent groups and we didn't say, hold the thing, get people in a room, we literally say. Put this on your mail and the reason why we think you should care is because of this issue. That issue would be different for business, it'd be different for the parent groups, and it'd be different for my neighborhood. And if I have three and I knock on the door and there's a soccer ball in the front yard, I'm gonna talk about the preschools.
Yeah.
If, you know, an elderly gentleman answers the door, maybe I'm talking about something else, you know what I mean? But if I have three things, like, hey, here's a, here's a postcard about town meeting, there's some videos on it, a little content. I think we find these topics interesting, we're gonna be there, love to see you, I'll walk to the next house. Cause odds are, I'm actually home a lot on the weekends, I just can't go like go to lots of things. So I think, I think we could do it and I think if we're gonna approach groups, the ask needs to be really, really simple for them. Which is just promoting it on their social media, their email list, by giving them a compelling reason.
One of the hard things is that, I don't know about you all, but you know, if I'm not expecting anyone, usually knocking the door, it's either the Jehovah's Witnesses.
Oh, yeah.
Um, or or um, it's Environment Massachusetts looking for a donation or, you know.
Fair enough.
You, so I did, this is my first job out of college, uh door to door sales for Verizon files. That's your ringtone, tiny T-buzz word in America. Um, people will answer the door.
We do.
Yeah, and I, and what you do if they don't is you leave behind.
Right, you leave a thing, you.
Tape a thing. So you've got a postcard and then you have a separate thing that you're holding, that's like, hey, I missed you. And you can even make a joke, cause I used to handwrite these, not Jehovah's Witness, just talking about town meeting, by the way, I live in your neighborhood.
Yeah, that's the part I love to hear.
My neighborhood, I live at forty five High Pine Circle.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just talking about town meeting, here's myself on number of, you know, like however you kind of wanna do it.
And then you think you'll hear back, which is kind of a nice way to.
Yeah, cause again, if I got handed the finance packet by one of my neighbors and they were like, hey. We're gonna be talking about how to fund the super fund site. Check it out, it's in this packet, I would one hundred percent read that. But the packet arrived in my mail with five hundred other things in the mail.
Yep.
And my wife sifted through it throughout all of the, this, for us.
Yeah.
And so I just, it never, you know what I mean?
Yeah. That, you know, what I think we should also consider is go where people are. So the side glance. You go to sports games on the weekends and you have parents who are willing to go and instead of knocking door to door, you go to all the other parents who are watching the same sports. Baseball, soccer, whatever, nothing more boring than, you know, going to a ski thing, you kid is on that hill for. One minute at best and the rest of the time you're looking for people to talk to.
Yeah.
But you go where people are, instead of making them come to you. Um making them o- offer that they can come on over or I'll come back is a harder thing than capturing them right where they are.
And so who would be engaged to do that? So again, are you talking about kind of like.
You need a parent.
Of volunteers in town that are are gonna be the town criers, they think.
Oh, don't we have a um, a banner for town crier still, Carmen?
We have a banner.
We do, the town crier.
Oh, oh, yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
And if we had a town crier, we can get him back.
Yeah, yeah, that's a sash, you're talking about a sash. We also have a banner.
Yep.
Although, um, you know, you can only hang the banner with white flags, so you can hang a banner and they put it in a place where I don't think anybody looks at it.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Last year, that banner really kind of caused us. If she's doing it, definitely it's really good this year because the date changes every year. So it was like Amanda's first week on the job and she was bringing in her home craft supplies. For us to like, we put duct tape over, room duct tape over and then Amanda was like using a label machine to change the date and we're like. Oh my God, we gotta figure out a better solution for this.
That's why I did, then if your eyes go right to the date. Um but but so I I like the point, um. You know, how, how many people roughly would that take and how would we kind of find those voters?
How many homes are in Concord?
Like six thousand.
Yep.
Uh, how many voters?
Homes.
Oh, how many homes?
Sixty five hundred homes.
Yeah, yes.
How soon do you remember?
So.
Yeah.
Apartments.
That's why we're totally there.
Yeah, I think your most realistic ask is for one weekend afternoon. You could knock fifty doors twice in six hours. I know that's a fact.
That's actually got the stick down.
Sign up to triple play is what you do. So I, you know, we're gonna that somewhere between eighty and a hundred. So.
Volunteers.
Yeah. So is there a solicitation for volunteers that goes out to all town? And then, well, it's, it's a, it's a little movement, right, where the slips, the volunteers' little petition goes out and we have a party. Right, and celebrate the volunteer day, the county volunteer day. Yeah, oh, I think a kickoff would totally be, I mean, you're gonna have to get them all their stuff.
Right, with food.
With food, always with food.
Yeah. Well, that sounds, I mean, I think that sounds exciting, cause right there you might get a hun, like fifty or a hundred volunteers.
Right.
Uh probably they would probably do it at town meeting, but maybe this would be a great time getting what happened for younger people.
I I think the prerequisites of all the things we're gonna come up with will be short form content. So I'll, I'll make that a thing and I'll, I'll even be happy to do the write up for it. Cause I, what I don't wanna do is go to people and be like, hey, get the word out, but if we're like, hey, here's the postcard, here's the flyer. Here's the list of houses in your neighborhood. We're asking for three hours on a Saturday afternoon to walk around and get to some people's heads.
So I I wonder if it would work for um. You know, there's a production cost and the budget's getting tighter all the time, right? Um but I suppose if you said, if you had eighty or a hundred volunteers and you sent them a PDF. And asked them to print out copies to give to their neighbors, it would be a lot to ask people to print fifty copies.
Mm hmm.
But.
Six thousand postcards is a rounding error. I just bought five thousand.
So yeah, as if postage is the most expensive, so if we're not mailing, if we're not making postage, it probably wouldn't be much.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can, I could look up the um. From when we did the mailing for the survey this fall, they they invoiced separate for the postcard and the postage. So I can look up what Concord printing charged us for the postcard. But the postage is the expensive part.
We just did that too, uh we, except we had our printer print it and we mailed it by putting it inside the newspaper. And it falls out and somebody puts that, picks it up, looks at it. And the paper can do that again.
So we would need, we would need somebody that sounds like, some that this committee might be willing to spearhead this effort, which would involve. Um maybe finding a location for the kickoff party, getting materials printed out. Um the communications to get the volunteers to sign up with like a form online or something and then they would all kind of attend this kickoff party. In uh. May, I guess you probably don't need to do it too early.
We, it's better to do it.
I think this is just, cause we probably have other topics too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna maybe down here.
Yeah.
Be done before we prioritize everyone's.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause there's certain.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good pick of that.
Yeah, alright, so we know we need short form content no matter what and then Eric, it was your idea, you wanna run with the details on? What, what did you was that?
It was brilliant.
It was a great idea. Yeah, sure.
Um, it would be like just under a thousand dollars to get the amount of postcards printed. I'll say if they're double sided and in color.
Yeah.
Because that's what we did for um.
What's the size?
Uh, five and a half, five, four and a quarter. Um, this is now just a completely unrelated idea, but an idea for this year, so it's not playing the long game, Alice. But a lot of people are just piggybacking on two fifty of things this spring. I don't know if there's any opportunity to think about, even if it's just. You know, like advertising something on one of their flyers for an event or something about town meeting, but there's. They're obviously doing a lot this spring and I know people are trying to think about how they can boost their event with theirs.
Uh David, I'm a member of the public, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
We're, I don't know if you were on online earlier or not, but we're, this is a committee meeting, uh looking for ideas to increase engagement. So we're just brainstorming. Uh and uh at some point, yeah, we're basically just having a brainstorming meeting about how to get more people engaged in town meeting.
I think you will not be even surprised, slightly surprised to hear, I could not be more delighted. That has been the fundamental issue facing. Our whole network box and guess what, here in town as well. Uh I just, I just. This, we would say when I was a kid, many, many years ago, take a, is doing that. I'm curious, if you could, you know, a whiteboard with.
Uh no, Chase is just editing a document on screen.
Hey, would it be possible to have maybe a semi-special edition of the bridge?
Mm hmm.
So that in essence.
I mean, I couldn't make that decision, but they would certainly entertain.
But, and idea, right, like in February, maybe it's not one article, but maybe it's three or four different.
They've done that, they did that article last year, right?
Sure, things that just, that way you can't really miss it.
I was, I was thinking.
I, I think it was a special issue, but there, there, there was lots of town meeting coverage.
Sure.
And everything up to it, like.
Yes, we want.
There was news groups and.
Yeah.
But there was not the FAQs or what is it, that was important, that's right, right?
Well, with, and the upcoming hearing dates, I think the hearing, the upcoming hearing dates, I think the hearings are really important.
But again, we have to stop, we have to think about how you, you know, public hearing isn't really the most sexiest thing that you're gonna spend your evening on it to.
And you don't wanna.
You need to.
Okay, where do you want them to show up, most importantly?
Yeah, that's the priority.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we move to the prioritization, I add short form information sources on here. Again, I think what would be really like helpful is, think about the funnel. If you make me aware of the town meeting and what it is, then I wanna know what are the different issues? And it's probably a second very short form video that's super high level. Like, we're gonna vote on this, 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 this and this and links to the next. Three to five minute video for each one of those, cause I'm not gonna watch. Three or five minute videos on thirty articles.
These are short bites.
I'm gonna select the three where I'm like, that I care about and then I wanna go. And if you've gotten somebody. Down that funnel to the point where they're looking at a video about a topic. They're almost certainly, you know, the odds of them coming, I think have increased significantly.
Now, um, do you think that those um videos can be produced in a balanced way?
Uh my assumption is the write ups are already balanced.
The writers in the, in the warrant?
I never.
Well, we don't, we don't have, um. We do, we have, um.
Yeah, we did. We have a description of every article.
We have a description of it, yes, so, yeah, we, we have, we definitely have a, uh, we don't have a pro and column, you know. But but what, what we have is a, what this article will do is this.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
And um, and of course, I think. You know, generally speaking, that little box is written by the opponent.
I think, yeah, it's called explanation.
Right, you are, it's written by the opponent of an article, so to the extent that there are opponents of an article, they don't have, none of their opposition thoughts are in there. So that's definitely true.
I. I think in a perfect world, you would have an overview of the article. A for opinion, an against opinion, and a financial impact statement for probably every one of them.
We adopted a backlog that requires us to do that for um ballot questions.
Yeah, cause that's really what I would want if I were watching this video. It's like, give me three minutes, tell me what it is. Why some people want it, why some people don't, and how much it's gonna cost. And then I can with that.
Mm hmm.
Pour my own opinion and do more research that's clearly available with deep financial analysis and much longer form. You know, just like information about it and things like that. Is that, that trusted neutral party that derives that, is that, is it, you know, G T? I mean.
You, now, usually, usually it's the legal women voters, I mean, they, they, I mean, they do make recommendations.
They.
Yeah.
There's another person.
So for example, and I, I brought, this is the, this is the book that had all of the town materials in it.
Oh, cool. Oh, cool.
Um and this one has their recommendations in it, they're in here on a page, but they do this every year and, you know, they do a little table.
So the, the, the lead conducts hearings, which are neutral, and then the board.
Yeah.
Then the, then the board needs to make recommendations.
Yes, the board needs to make recommendations and they base their positions on. Uh what do they say? It's general positions achieved by the lead through its process of study and consensus. On the applicability of those positions to the articles presented here and basically. They, you know, like the national organization has certain kind of basic tenants, you know, which are gonna do this, you know, for transparency in government or for voter participation, whatever it is. And so when you look at, at various of the articles through that lens. And then they hear kind of the local permutations, then they come up with a recommendation for it.
So the pros and cons are hard to do.
Yeah.
In a short period of time. So how important is it to have pros and cons versus just a factual statement? Article thirty is going to ask for thirty million dollars in borrowing to fix the roof on this building. It's gonna be X dollar in back in the first year we borrow money under property tax period.
Yeah.
Then people can make up their minds.
That's.
Whether the hole in the roof batters or not.
That's way better than that.
Mm hmm.
I do, I do.
Again, it's, we're good with the perfect video, we're good, let's just.
Yeah, I, again. I feel the financial impact in the town and I think a lot of that is because all of these ideas in isolation are generally well thought out and good.
Right.
And so there is no real dissenting opinion that often gets voiced well. It, so, but I hear you, like who writes that? How do they write it fairly?
Well, it's, it tends to be, it's, it's quite silent, right? So.
Yeah.
And so I mean, Parrish are, what, on the finance committee spent a long time trying to figure out like. Can't we give this all in a pie chart so we can understand how, you know, like. You know, any, any bubble you tap down on the line that. You know, any any bubble you tap down on the line, it pops up somewhere else, right? So it just to understand.
Yeah.
How these things relate and um. People don't understand how they relate.
Well, step one, I'm very confident we can solve for short form content without that, because it's already seems to have been produced in the past. And then I think if we get into that a little bit, how many articles are there that actually get voted on?
It varies, um but yeah, usually somewhere between um somewhere between forty eight and fifty eight. I mean, we've had as many as sixty, we've had as few as forty two.
Yeah.
Um.
And then and then, you know, thirty of them go on the consent calendar or how many?
No, usually it usually it's between between, well, usually it's between twenty and twenty five.
Twenty twenty five, but conceivably, we might put more.
Yes.
That if there's nothing for that, but it still leaves quite a few.
Including including certain, including citizens petitions, which are a little harder to talk about.
Yeah.
So. Uh huh. Yeah. And and I think what you're saying and is saying, you know, that you'd pick some of those to feature and it's interesting because. Um we could look in the past and see what kind of articles have been talked about a lot and I mean, you can kind of anecdotally hear it from from most people. But um when I was at a P T U G meeting saying, you know, when when would you come, who will come for important issues?
Uh huh.
And I'm like, okay, what what are is important, school, right? So then now we're saying, what are our top three issues? Well, it depends on who we're trying to get, so like, is this really targeted to school age parents? Because it seems like that's the demographic that's missing from our our chart.
I bet it's more than school age.
Okay.
Parents, I think that's probably. Maybe the most significant chunk of that yellow circle, but I have no chunk represents more than a quarter of that circle, I think there's probably a lot of people missing.
Well.
In the regular high school, a college age kids could be in this.
Well, they can, but they're typically away.
But they tend to be a college.
Yeah, yeah, they're definitely away, I mean, the shares and shares, nobody knows.
I'm sorry, now it's college and year you're on.
But but typically in late April, they're they're not really here, but um so I guess everything, how do we, you know, short of making a video for all.
Yeah, I don't.
You know, funny ones that get discussed over the course of the days, how do we pick which are the hot ones, will we kind of talk to the moderator and she'll like, oh, these are. What's what are typically being discussed, I mean, it's usually pretty clear what people are gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, especially once you come through the hearings, yeah.
Well, after the hearings, definitely, it just depends on what what the timing is for this.
Yeah.
Probably, I like the idea of a bridge thing in February, right, gearing people up, but then getting people motivated to come, we can't do it too early or. You know, but they'll forget.
Right.
But they'll forget. Yeah, forget about it, yeah.
Again, I'm probably oversimplifying, but my, what I suspect is that there's only a handful of issues, I don't know what that number is, but. Some probably single digit number that are controversial and voted on in a way that's not like a ninety ten kind of situation. Those would be the ones that I would think about prioritizing, having both sides of the story explained. I think if something's on a consent article, I would actually probably be frustrated if I spent a significant amount of time looking into it and then we just passed it and we wind it. I think those ideas sound like there's a reason they're in the consent article, they're not writers.
Yeah, nothing goes on the consent calendar if it's.
The content calendar.
And you always ask, you know, and yeah, and and right.
And people can pull off.
You don't have to pull it off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a very low bar of ten people.
Yes, very low.
Ten people can vote to take an article out of the consent calendar and debate it, it happens.
Exactly.
It doesn't, it doesn't happen often.
It doesn't happen often, but it has happened.
It happens.
Yeah. Um and and sometimes I get, sometimes people let me know.
We have a fire truck.
Before we get to town meeting, by the way, we're gonna pull this off and then I just pull it off.
Yeah.
Um and rather than.
Have ten people say.
It's faster if we just, if I just pull it off and then we get to it when we get to it.
But they're unusual things, sometimes it was, I remember an ambulance or a fire truck that got pulled off of the consent calendar because people wanted to debate how important it really was for that vehicle. How well, you know. And it's all debated.
It it does that, though, cuz that's the thing, it's like, oh, just one more thing, just one more thing, and that's why I really like the idea of like. Here you can have this one thing, what else is gonna come off, but.
Right.
Uh huh.
Um so these are all, this is all good, um. Are are you, are we still on, when you say prioritization, are you saying prioritization of kind of um the strategies that we're gonna put in place to engage?
Uh the prioritization is the how you get someone to take action, post awareness.
Okay, so.
So it's motivating people to come.
Yeah, I am prioritizing this over all other things that we do.
You tell us, like you said, we we. We have this question for ages.
Yeah.
What and so it sounds like what would make you go is if it directly affects you.
I'm trying not to use me specifically, but the like the proverbial me that I represent with lack of awareness.
Okay, yeah. Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of the chases out there.
That's right, there's so many of us.
So that solves one problem, right?
Which, what's else?
But if we get a group of people interested because we said that this is a major budget issue that you get to vote on. This is whether we're gonna purchase the land or whatever for um the super fund type of Converent, however you wanna oppose that, you get all the neighbors to come out to vote on that. And then. They don't stay for three days.
Right.
Because their issue is done.
I. I would argue.
And that was one of the arguments that we found early on in our, you know, our discussion is that. There's a frustration with people who are willing to sit through three days with other people who come for a special interest article. And there's no way around that, people have special interests, they can't afford three days, they.
And it's interesting because then the other people who leave have frustration with the fact that the decisions are being made by the people who stay in the room.
Yeah, yeah.
I I dream of a town meeting that's held outdoors in a large field where I would bring my entire family.
We did that.
And I would want to stay.
Yeah, we did that.
We did that, we did it for fun.
But but on a place where we could have food.
Food and and cell service.
We have water.
And games.
Maybe an AC restrooms, huh?
Because I'm.
No, it's because we run the outer fields, there's there's.
That's true, yeah. But you know what, when I kind of keep that idea around, cuz that's what I was thinking too, like cuz then it's then it's more community feel. And I was thinking you get the older kids to like babysit the younger kids or do an activity with the young kids, it was like more of a family feel. Um and I kind of thought then you you kind of liked that, but like everybody else said. It seemed like such a community type thing that might make the actual event better.
Carlisle is doing it, um when we heard from their town committee, the special committee chair, that they were uh. They're doing like exactly that this year.
So so maybe have a Saturday, right, meaning like a.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, well, the daytime meeting.
One day. Um so I I don't think that should be off the list, I think it should be discussed as a recommendation. Um but I guess within the context of this, do you think that we would have more engagement? Um and of of which populations would be more engaged and could we have proper ADA compliance if we were outside? Could we have good sound and things like that?
So those very important technical questions, I think we need to get flushed out. But in terms of. Like my cohort of Conqueror, if something was known about a couple months ahead of time and it was an event. That was, I mean, again, I grew up at the town graveyard last year. There was music, there was stuff that every local business came and put up a tent and they were, you know. I'm the local gift store, here's some gifts you can buy, there was always like giveaways and there was always an area for really little kids with some stuff, bigger kids for others. And every everybody in town.
I mean, that's what I was wondering, could you do like Sunday afternoon?
So here's what Carlisle is doing, they are having family day, they're promoting town meeting family day, and it's gonna be Sunday afternoon. Uh voting is gonna happen inside the auditorium at the Carlisle Public School. Um but the intent is to draw more families, encourage kids to play on the onsite cast and pray around while more and gather voting.
That is that is a good spot too, right?
We'll have to go, I mean, just to.
That's right, yeah.
So that's what I was thinking, like, ever since, like, I'm thinking of the rec center.
May, yeah.
Um but but we wouldn't have an indoor voting space that also coordinates, so that's why I was wondering if there were any other available spaces we could hold it.
Well, the middle school eventually have that. Yeah, though we've been told in no uncertain terms to plan nothing for the middle school for this year because they just.
Yeah.
They just don't, they just don't, anything could happen and, you know.
Yeah.
Um it's weird.
So with four hundred million dollars of spending over the next ten years, drive people to town meeting?
Tell me that number with less zeros and make it exactly through my house and.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
The average house in Conqueror.
I think you did that too.
I hope you did.
Well, we did that last year, but I'm just looking at the FinCon or.
Yeah, no, it's.
They're basically four hundred million dollars of middle school spending for tightening capital agreement, that's not even operating.
Yeah.
So we can convert that to a dollar, no?
Well, this is always what I do with the national, when I'm like, you have to remove nine zeros and we're three hundred grand debt as a household and we're gonna spend ten grand more every month, you know, and everyone's like, what's the saying?
Right.
My.
So so I guess relating to that, what's why that's really important is by taking the town meeting, what is kind of excited? And you can you can vote against it, but we're, that's kind of a tough time to do that, that's the only problem.
Well, this is an educational, see, I'm I'm thinking this is a build up, right?
Yes.
So we're not, not all of these projects can be voted on at this town meeting.
That's a good point, yes.
But the point is that out of this four hundred, some of them are coming up. So if you wanna learn more about what's coming up and why and how it affect your pocketbook, start showing up.
Yeah.
Most, most.
That's the point.
Most people in my cohort don't have any idea how these things get reviewed.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Which was which was the reason for the did you know, like, did you, you know, or even like something like, did you know we have a public celebrations, you know?
Yeah.
Committee or something like that, so like, there's a lot of opportunities for did you know, did you know how your property taxes go up? Or do you know how your home is valued or something like, we have a special office, like, so it's. It it's related to town meeting, but it's also kind of like how our talent and government and things that go into it might also be of interest.
Yeah.
Um oh, town meeting trivia.
Yes.
Yeah, David.
Right, waiting to wonder, so is there anything you can imagine that would get folks interested in how that decision gets made?
Yeah.
You know, a year long process. Uh of course, the whole point here is the money. But uh you're pointing out, they don't have a sense for steps along the way, because it blocks them.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of anything that would intrigue them to the process?
I I do, so it's another another round of there. So imagine a competition, three citizen petitions. Right, you know, you file right beginning of the year, you know, you write your citizen petition proposal. And the committee quote unquote, whatever that committee is, picks three of them. And then we follow the course of these citizen petitions throughout the year. It's like, you know, it's a good great British bankoff except they're citizen petitions. And then, you know, so we get to follow this process, right? One of them is is owned by law, right, one of them is is a uh you know, selling offs and confirmation, you know, it's something like, oh my god. Right, the other one is 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 a vegetarian thing. And uh and you know, they they go to the committees, they, you know, they have conversations with people, they. And it's just this narrative of how government's working through the eyes of these regular people, but.
I don't get it, I like that you try not to have ideas.
Random.
Getting people to show up at town meeting is to have people in your cohort be on some of the committees? Because then they're at your parties and they're at the baseball game and they're talking to you.
I view this as a stepping stone into local government where the vast majority of people will never take another step further.
Okay.
But you will get some percentage of people like me that find their way onto some kind of charity as they start to get exposed to this. I also believe that if. Many more people are very aware. Of the problems and what's being voted on and what's being spent, through osmosis, change will happen. I couldn't tell you specifically like, oh, they then learn the process of specific, but if you know that all of your neighbors. And anyone who may or may not be able to vote for you in upcoming elections are just more aware of all these things. Because everyone seems to be mad about the spending, but I don't really know how that spending gets decided or how are you changing it? So I I think if we get people just kind of in the boat, talking about it, a lot of that will wash out naturally.
How many um more people do you think we could get with awareness?
What is my budget?
You think it's a budget, oh, okay, no, I'm.
Well, I I do, the reason why I fantasize about a day, one day, weekend activity that involves.
Oh, but only one day?
You, I mean, you could have overflow, but your main, your night one stuff on one day. Five or six hours, there's local businesses with tents, there's stuff for families to do, it's fun, there's food, there's drink. I I don't think that after two years it'd be unrealistic to triple it.
So so that's what I think, but when I looked at trying to get our twelve hours of stuff that we have to get done in half the time, I I don't see how to do it. But what you're saying is they'll come to some and then there'll still be some that.
Do you do your big ones in the big fun weekend, I love Sunday afternoon, sounds great, and then, I mean, you get the drop off, I think it's historic, so you're just. Yeah, that's Monday night, Tuesday night.
So how does that um address the issue of trust? In terms of, like, we still have things like, oh my gosh, the the lawn leaf blower issues only decided, you know, three hundred people or something.
So let's see, we we will never solve that issue.
Right.
And and it's what I said at early one of the other meetings, by not showing up, implicitly they're voting with their feet. And you can't cater to folks that don't care about it, so you try to get as many people as you can to attend the ones that you can.
Okay.
If they can't show up or don't wanna show up on Monday or Tuesday or following Saturday, if that's what we decide. Yeah, there's a limit on how much you can do.
And and the main reason I ask is because it's kind of like what drives all of these, you know, town meeting study committees throughout, you know, like, what what is the problem we're trying to solve? Um basically, we're trying to make something a priority that people don't think is a priority.
Right.
Yeah.
Um but to, you know, to what end, is it because our decisions are gonna be different or is it people are gonna feel different about the decisions being made? So that's that's kind of what I'm gonna change, so we're still gonna have people show up for the issues that are important to them, that's kind of what I've heard throughout, it's like, I I wanna know when you're gonna do these things, I I can come to that. But I'm not gonna come to everything else and that's okay.
Right.
Um and then, but are we still gonna have the sentiment where, well, how did that get passed, there was no, there were probably a few people there, so it's not representative, you see what I'm saying? Like, I wanna make sure that. We can, I don't know, somehow, I don't know.
Sure. Yeah.
Not, I'm just gonna give you one example of how hard this is, and that is, um in twenty fifteen. Uh the um. The, you know, the uh actually, no, I'm sorry, it was that it was two thousand eight, it was two thousand eight when um the um. Stock market crashed, we had we had a big recession and the select board instructed the then town manager to have zero increased town budget.
Right.
There was no way to do that without cutting services because of built in escalations. Among the things that he cut was he decided, well, we have a lot of unnecessary streetlights.
Oh.
And there's a lot of people who are really interested in dark skies and so forth, and if you look at the history of our streetlights. Some of them, we never really had a policy, so people would call up and say, it's kind of dark on one, you know, and like a streetlight would go in, and sometimes it was on private property. Um and so they decided they were gonna clean that up and turn off like half of the streetlights. And he presented this at a public meeting at the select board, select board was cool with it, he presented it at a public hearing, everybody was cool with it. He presented it on the floor of town meeting before, you know, five, six hundred people, no questions, and then they turned the lights off.
Yeah.
And that.
And then it hit the fan, it hit the fan. Somehow, you know, it didn't matter how many times you told people, here, here's a budget cut we're gonna make, this is gonna be the implication, we're going to turn half the lights off. And um and it didn't register for people that that was what was gonna happen.
I don't know how much of the problem you can solve, but I expect the majority of people in town weren't aware until the lights went off.
I think that's true, right? That's definitely right. I think that's absolutely right, it's about how you communicate, how you set your message and whose, how do they receive that, it was out there all over.
But that, so so to your point, it would be like, the budget includes a proposal to shut half, streetlights are really interested in this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Well, I I think defining success for us, right, cuz what we're talking about is tripling. What is it, like two, three percent of town, like kind of five percent?
No, it's it's more, I mean, like here, I have it, um.
Five hundred people, how many people are in Conqueror, twenty thousand?
So. In in.
Ten thousand active voters, active voters.
Ah, okay, okay.
Four fourteen fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand active, right?
Active, active. Fourteen thousand registered voters.
Registered voters.
Ten thousand active voters.
Okay, sure.
Even if they voted, sorry.
Either they voted, well, sorry, they're they're responding with the census and or they voted.
Yeah.
So COVID, COVID was low, right, like in the three percent, but in recent years, it's been six and a half, eight percent. And then, you know, prior to that, like seven, so let's say.
When was it eighty percent?
Hmm?
When was it eighty percent?
The middle school building projects, that was the meeting.
There you go, so I don't think, I don't think you have to toss that out.
So 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 fifty percent, but I mean.
That that should be, that should be our goal.
But I think. You can talk.
I shouldn't even pick.
No.
Really. But we didn't have all these numbers.
Yeah, no, I think we've done.
I didn't graph it, all so I could see is that there really was a decline or something, but um. So we've got a logistical thing, like, are we really gonna triple it because of how many seats is that, how many footers is that, things like that, and. I'm not saying we shouldn't try to just based on competitive. I'm not saying we shouldn't try to, just based on competency. And but I I love to hear like the success, like, how will we know if it's successful? Is it just going to be about the the numbers? Because I'm hoping it's more like along the lines of that feeling that says, well, at least now I know more about it, I couldn't go today, but I I trust that the outcome went well, because now I know more about the process.
Right.
I don't know how we measure that.
Empower Sharon's point, maybe we could get more people to make an explicit decision about going or not going.
He read, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I think that's an iterative, I mean, that takes time to build that. But I think your idea about having, you know, tents and businesses there and food available, maybe with line with food trucks. It's sort of the first, the first part of engagement is building civic pride. Of civic, you know, you, this is our town, this is what we do every year, we have town meeting, and so glad you're here, and you go shopping, you visit, you know. And so it takes a bit of time to build that commitment or pride in your.
And the way to measure is just longitudinal surveys, simplify the survey. For five or six questions versus a little comprehensive one we did, and just do that over time.
And I don't think you'd also, in our kind of our other surveys, you'd also get a bit more sense of belonging too, I think, if we have that shared something like over time.
Definitely. I don't think anything that we've thrown out tonight, including a big field day with businesses and food trucks and games for the kids, is undoable in six months. To be honest. In fact, I'm absolutely positive.
I think we can definitely do food trucks. Um, because there, right now, we, the health department maintains a list of food trucks that get permitted for a full calendar year. And also presumably we'll have more food trucks that get that license for the two fifty. And so they'll already be licensed and stuff, and we can just reach out to them and say, town meeting is going to be on this date. Uh, public safety said we can hold four food trucks safely in the parking lot. Let us know.
We're talking about doing something, for example, on a Saturday or Sunday, at the high school, so you got the auditorium, you get the food trucks outside.
Yes.
You can have tents and stuff set up around for businesses.
The businesses are easy, you just say, hey, you bring.
Right? Because let's start in Sunday, say, let's say in the field, because that's a little bit complicated.
Well, town day, no, no, no. It's like, you know, that. Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's all.
Let's just start with the building we have where we know we don't have issues.
Yeah.
Add the food trucks and the business camps and all that. A year after, maybe we find a good.
We've tried to get food trucks to come in the past, and they wanted a minimum guarantee. Which we could not get.
We will give it to them, the businesses will sponsor minimum guarantees.
Agreed.
So um.
Thursday.
So I think what we're talking about doing is kind of in our next meeting, talk about this as a recommendation, because it would involve changing the date. Uh, which is, there's still time to change the date, right? Um, and.
Is there time?
Yeah, for the for town meeting.
Well, the town.
This is change the date, you can change it to the start on a Sunday.
Is there a time to change the date? For the party.
We have to find out if the schools would allow that. Because that's the biggest thing, we'd have to start on a weekend.
I'd say the sort of survey is pretty negative about a weekend deal.
And and so I think that's because.
It wasn't a town day.
Right, I I know, and and.
It was in a town day, it was today's conventional.
Yeah, I think it was like.
I don't think we can do it, because I think that high school graduation is on the Sunday before junior high.
Uh. They're going, you've got to write a cap before the survey. We have to do our numbers out.
So so that, but this is where we're heading, is we think we might want to make a recommendation, whether it's for this year or next year.
Well, for the purpose of tonight, I think what we should say is exploring an outdoor location. Because I think there's a lot of pros about the high school, there's also a massive con that they do not have selling service.
Right, so they're they have.
And there are, there are places in town that do, that are just as large, and I'm sure we can figure out parking.
But certainly look at that, you know, there are, there are, um, there certainly are logistical challenges to having an outdoor meeting. Weather, lightning, where do people go if there's a thunderstorm? Because you've got to have a place where everyone can shelter, um.
Yeah.
And um, you know, wifi, cell service, parking. Um, and um, you know, providing water for people, doing sunstroke, medical, you know, so.
That was all.
Be helped with all that, I was going to say.
But that's because it was relatively short. It was very short that day.
It was relatively short, but still, we had to do all that.
Yeah, you had to plan.
Excuse me, pardon? There's a town meeting after the conference?
Yes.
Can't take a minute man?
Stay long.
Oh, good.
Can't do it, man, we're at the front of the school.
We would need a bylaw that said we could have um, our meeting at at Vinamam. Um, because I I think um, my remember the statute is that it says that unless there is a town bylaw or special legislation to the contrary, a town meeting and town elections must be held within.
So here's one other crazy idea.
Hmm?
What are the crazy idea? The prison.
I was just thinking of paying them.
You definitely. I would go there.
So this is.
We're going to draw our wish.
One of the things that we wanted to look at was alternative locations and what would be involved and why, and we might want an alternative location, so that's.
So one of the other places I thought about is um, one of the hangars at Handstone, okay? Because there's hangars within the borders, signature is.
It probably is.
In the corner.
Go, we'll vote on the hangars while we're there.
Especially if you're on a pro.
So so these are all good, what I'm hearing is that the the location could influence people's desire to go. And worries, and their experience when they're there.
I think if you can adequately market something as a town day.
Yeah.
Versus a legislative only meeting, because I think what excites me about that is you will get people who go not for the voting part, they don't really understand, and then they will be there and begin to understand.
Yeah, I was just thinking of buildings.
Will go because their, their labor is hosting their tent for their business, and they want to go support them.
And do we have another activity or two for like, not a town show, but something like that?
Well, high school debate, so our kids are good. We have high school debaters doing issue or.
Well, moving away from the real stuff, maybe a band, a high school band?
So a town day without meeting. So the reason I say that is because, you know, we could do it on a Friday as opposed to Friday, well, you're off on Friday afternoon, what was it, no game? But you know, so.
Town day is out of you?
Well, no, it would be a meeting, it would be a town day, so so, you know, people from different departments in the town, uh, people from different boards, everybody is.
But it wouldn't be the ATN.
No, it wouldn't be the ATN, it would be a big civic event that's a town day.
Well, I think we were talking about combining it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm saying, let's look at it different.
I see, okay.
You know, let's if you want to build, build a town identity. Let's have a town identity event that brings out, you know, the faces of our.
So we have a guy in town, um, who's on the two hundred and fiftieth committee. Um, who is going to volunteer for the finance committee next year. And he uh, comes from another state where he put together giant concerts. And he's really interested in creating an annual giant concert for Concord.
I've heard of you.
I think his name is Chris Johnson.
Chris Johnson, I mean, when you said concerts, I said, oh, I know who it is.
Yeah.
Did he do the write-out concert last summer?
He he's for the two fiftieth, he's now planning the drone show that they're hoping to have on the evening of the nineteenth.
Cool.
So don't we have a field day or activity or something?
We have that day.
We have the fourth of July.
They may have.
Yeah, so the reason I ask is, I used to live in Holliston, and you had something called Celebrate Holliston. In October, and the whole town show for that. I don't, is the whole town show for Adbit?
That is pretty big, that is pretty big. There's a West Concord Festival, a lot of people show up for that.
Pajama Day.
I don't think a lot of people show up for Fourth of July.
Absolutely.
Yeah, big world.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
So there are opportunities, I think, to to build, um, and then we would want to think about the purpose of having a, you know, creating a town day to build civic pride, and then hopefully people will then want to come to town meeting.
Well, you know, what I'm suggesting and asking is rather than rebuilding, why don't we just leverage what we have? And try to.
Well, Patriots Patriots Day is huge, but the weather's usually kind of.
And it's last year, one seventy and sunny, I remember that.
That was fifty and fifty.
Yeah.
Did you get to everything that you wanted to get to so far before you wrap up?
I'd swear, yeah, no, I, well, we've kind of already gone into net promotion. Uh, no, I guess we have not, um.
What is that?
I mean, I I'm big into the feed people thing, because I think particularly when we're uh, when we're meeting together, because I think it's hard to, it's it's hard of delivering it together when we meet together, like, very, very, very together, like, that's really important.
Yes. You wouldn't, there's no other scenario conceivable where you wouldn't feed people three nights in a row from seven to eleven P M. You know what I mean?
I was sort of thinking like Top Lock, and like, everybody would show up and be like, oh.
Uh, it's funny, the body health said that.
We have to stop and watch.
They have like pies, they have a pie contest.
Mark would help us put up a nap, you can have a bake sale.
You can't have a bake sale.
Not yet, please. You can, as long as the the cakes are stored on.
Oh, my god.
They have to be made in a uh, they have to be made in a commercial kitchen.
Commercial kitchen.
Oh, wow.
And it's meant to be a commercial kitchen.
I had a cookie company, I had it, you had a commercial kitchen.
But I'm sorry, continue this.
No, I mean, we're kind of touching on all of it at this point, because if you, I mean, if you have a place that has food trucks and local business tents, then you will have food and drink for people. Um, providing at-home childcare, that was if we stick with evening nights. Um, my kids can't stay up until.
Yeah, I started with the high school kids providing at-home childcare.
I think it's a wonderful idea, that I've probably brought it up in our meeting too, and I've been thinking about it, yeah. Um, you know, one of the things we could do too is um, you know, one of our problems is we we use um, we use three or four spaces in the high school for town meeting. We use the gym, auditorium, cafeteria, and we use the little gym, where the childcare usually is.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and you can't eat in the gym, you can only have water. You can't eat in the auditorium, you can only have water, you can eat in the cafeteria. We've never been able to really make good use of the cafeteria for, as a meeting space, because you have to be able to close the meeting off if you have to count the vote.
Yeah.
Um, so that people aren't coming and going while you're trying to count. It's an interesting thing, because clippers would probably make that come a ways, and.
Right.
Right, but 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 that's a, that that's an issue. And um, and also that's where we check everybody in, and with all the, you know, the different.
Shot in the tongue, right?
Yes, it's not a charm room in there to do all the stuff we need to to do. So a really interesting question, I suppose, is whether, you know, what if we moved to check in upstairs?
Totally will be good.
For June, we could probably move it outside.
Yeah.
Because the weather will be good enough, and we can put tents up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, I know that the town ended during COVID, our extension things would.
And it was upstairs.
Yeah.
Tapes that run between, so we could probably do a better job, and then we could use the existing tables and chairs. We don't have any trouble making that meeting space connected with everything else. We used to have a delay that was a problem, but we fixed that. Um, so there's no problem broadcasting or having a microphone in there in the cafeteria, that's all fine. So.
Moving the check-in upstairs though seems like, if if we couldn't do it outside, it seems like it would be a weird flow, because.
It would be very weird flow, because the parking's down on the lower side.
Right, no one comes in from the top.
Yeah.
You'd need.
It's pretty nice, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's pretty nice, you're supposed to.
I would, I would love to see more high school kids helping check in, particularly if we're going to be clippers.
They can't, they can't do that, um, they, well, maybe they could, I think.
Oh, so you eat eighteen plus?
We have to ask Karen, I know she actually, all those people get paid, they're all hired and trained. They've got to be, because they're they're pole workers, tell you.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and they're, yeah, because I foresee handing out clippers to be, we did it before, I know in the temporary one, but I foresee this being a very long check-in process. I don't remember it being pretty good a lot last time, but. No, I don't think it was too bad, it was, no, not bad.
It wasn't bad. It's pretty bad.
So did we get to everything that?
Well, I was going to ask a question, are you thinking of actually calculating the net score? Are we just by a survey, or would you recognize, like?
I think we could, I think you guys capture emails or contact information of people that go to us.
Uh, okay, well, we we can if we want, right?
No, we go to the town meeting.
Yeah, we'd like to.
We can if we want, and that way you just ask them, score.
Yeah.
What would you do, that, right?
I also liked the idea of like a follow-up impact.
It's very interesting, right?
Whenever you go to a really well-known charity event, you get a follow-up content that's like, hey, here's what you, you know, what you guys donated, blah blah, we raised all this money, and it's going to go to these things, you know, whatever, I mean, obviously.
Maybe the board of assassins could do that, but actually it's not a goal.
Well, yeah, it would be cool, be like, you know, we had twelve hundred people show up from Concord, you know, twenty-seven businesses, small, you know, something, just to kind of build a little like.
Yeah, so, there is a message that goes out on news and notices from the town clerk every day at of town meeting saying, here's how many people came, here's the articles we voted on. And, you know, these were, these were passed, these bailed, et cetera, so, you know, that happens.
Yeah. Where where?
Does that go?
It goes to, have you sent a permit?
I think what maybe where Chase is going is to get a nice note from the town. Thank you, thank you for your attendance at town meeting this year. At town meeting, let's re-accomplish X, Y, and Z.
We could just find email, we probably could.
That's what we do.
That is a real. But we don't have email.
If they sign up for news notice, if they sign up, maybe they'll just send it to actually.
Yeah, actually, that was kind of, if news notices is easy. One of the things I've actually wondered is whether the town census could ask for email addresses. It doesn't currently, but that would be a crazy.
Yeah. Ask, ask it to check in.
That would be amazing, thank you.
Or ask when you check in.
Yes, you got it.
Just forget about everything else, there there are Patrick right then and there.
It could be voluntary, would you like to be on the town meeting email list?
It adds to the person, exactly, per person, yeah, it adds, it adds time I check in, but.
Exactly.
I mean.
Yeah, be optional, you want to give your email, send your follow-up on everything you voted on tonight.
Yeah, I wonder if we can have a form.
Yeah.
It would be a QR code to get to the forum, so just when you check in, put your phone in the QR code, you can plug in the form that you want later.
And then paper, and so you fill in your email address. And not even have the intake workers do it, because they're just, here's a piece bigger, if you're interested, just give us your email address.
Yeah, because I.
Name, name and email, you don't worry about it.
I have QR code, P T S D, I'm lost here.
Name and email, that's all we need.
Do what, uh?
Because there was no wifi.
Because what?
There was no wifi.
Having a location with cell phone service is a huge, that unlocks a lot of things. People can take digital payments, people can scan QR codes, so keep contact.
It's priceless, yeah.
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 We can book up the.
He said it, she was like, I don't like being there, my wife hates when I'm in places without cell phone service.
I hate it too, throw the police a fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right, I I love the high school for a lot of reasons, but that's like it. Chase, we're almost at eight thirty, we would schedule to go to eight thirty? Oh, okay, then let's track up. Wait, is it now? Yeah.
Um, as a venture of a brainstorming, I have all kinds of ideas bubbling, if I could do just two.
Please.
Um, thanks so much, in other words. Um. As we know, uh, the difference between town meeting and a vote at ballot box is that, guess what? You talked about, you deliberate, in other words, before you vote. Um, I apologize for coming in in the middle, you may have talked about all of this, but uh, as you can imagine, the question in mind is, um, some of the stimulation of interest, has that been a non-reactive? I'm just, you're going to vote on how much money to have this, and if you go to ballot box and do that. Is there some thought, then, leave it for later, if there's some thought about an interest in the fact that you're going to come and deliberate this thing? Um, the other thought, uh, appreciated, Eric, uh, laying out, uh, what's the legal one promoters does. Uh, in fact, I've heard me say it before, the motto of the league is, yes, I remember, other people in this room are a member. Uh, is that democracy is not a spectator sport, or if you put it positively, the whole point is uh, the, almost the DNA of the league is exactly the discussion topic tonight. Uh, getting people to play their part as citizens in a democracy. And I would suggest that the committee might find a, uh, a very interested partner in the league to do the source, to be targeted. Eric, could you point it out, that, yes, they already recommend this and that, based on the the national league, you know, uh, guidelines, working out of head and mind work, but. Guidelines, mark that up, have a right word, but. Forget about that for now, the league's interest is exactly the topic tonight, more people engage. I think the committee, by the time, as I say, um, quite interested partner there. And, uh, you know who to talk to, to make that happen. Dylan, thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, why don't we disseminate these down into big chunks? Well, it's a tricky, I don't wanna rush it, but I don't wanna, kind of have a time here.
No, I think it is worth summarizing.
Yeah.
Cause I was just gonna ask you to do that, cause in terms of the awareness, a short form video is one.
Yeah, I'll I'll run with that, short form content.
Okay, but but I wasn't even assigning or asking for volunteers at this point, but we'll put you down.
Well, and what I am specifically asking for is only to fill out. This essentially, so we can kind of like.
Yeah, fair enough, okay, yeah, good.
Flood our thoughts a little bit, not running it to.
And then engage community groups, you know, neighborhood captain idea, that there could come up.
Yeah, sure, well, I think there's two separate there. I think one is, there, that's a large body of work, just to think through how we get a hundred people to volunteer in their neighborhood, what would be asked, and the other would be like. Going to the P T A with short form content, asking them to sponsor.
Yeah, so so that was the notion of, or engaging community groups to talk with.
Yeah.
Neighbors, as well, but, so there's two of those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and then I didn't make a comprehensive list of all these groups, but youth sports leagues, two hundred and fiftieth. Adversary, those types of groups.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of, yeah, of the, so does somebody, so Eric's got the knock on your neighbor's door. Does somebody else wanna take the, how do you get a list of all these groups, and start figuring out who to contact and them?
What, which groups, you mean the groups that are likely collaborators?
Yeah.
We have, we definitely have, you, you said you're gonna do that?
I know.
We definitely have contacts for all the P T G newsletters.
Yep.
Oh, you do?
We do.
I think we put it all together as part of it.
Exactly, I have it, so we have something where we started to to do the contacts for the survey.
Sort of newsletters?
Will you, will you send what you have?
Yeah, I think it's a contact for all I can use that as a base.
The newsletters, P T G newsletters, but then you put together anything, did we put that in one place?
Uh, I'll look, I may have added.
We all like to just contact in our own places.
Um.
And, um.
We identified. Uh, we had elevator speech, we segmented the population, did we, do I have a list of all those?
So those are the three major categories, right?
But I don't know that I have it, I'm looking at these notes, is that a communication strategy?
Yep.
So we had town day.
Yeah, town day's a big one that I think.
And then we had town day with and without A T M, I don't know whether we are.
Did you already do some location work?
Um, not beyond town buildings.
Yeah.
So, I'm not, I haven't done any work on private buildings that we could potentially try to.
I can generate a list of some private buildings, you know, I mean, we know we've got the private schools, we've got Middlesex, we've got Concord Academy, we've got the Shepherd Brooks.
Yeah.
We've got the Fenn School.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I don't know what it is that Concord Academy's gonna under construction over there, but I I think you're gonna have a much bigger performing arts space.
It's a theater, it's a theater. So, yeah, it's a theater.
Exactly.
Although I looked up and it's not gonna have a lot of seats. Cause I thought I looked up and I was like, I don't know where to see.
Yeah, it's sort of a class, it's not like.
Yeah, yeah, it's much smaller than I thought it would.
I think we get.
Middlesex is gonna be putting up enough for this year, but they're building a gigantic fieldhouse.
Is it, is it fair to assume that if we're gonna do it inside, we would probably do it at the high school again no matter what?
For this year.
For this year, I think.
This one is here, definitely, but I I think after that, we should look at other places.
Yeah.
Yeah, so does somebody wanna run with like what an outdoor location would look like? I don't know if that's feasible for this year, but I think the. The challenge that I have with indoor locations in general is unless the space is huge, you can't really accomplish much else with like. Local businesses setting up tents, having like field games for kids, having, you know, I mean, unless the space, I don't have the spaces, but that's a huge space.
There's still probably not could be that high.
So doesn't that mean the Ripley Emerson, um, uh, write-off?
Yeah, you could put two thousand people at Emerson.
I mean, Emerson is sounds some pretty large at that.
Yeah.
I I think Emerson, well, because they got the Hunt Gym right there.
Right.
Which is nice, and the library down the street.
Well, they got the Hunt Gym, and then there's also, yeah, libraries down the street, or armory is right across the street.
The army, is that what town meeting used to be?
Um, the courthouse, it's, the court, Alcott is right down the street for parking, um, the courthouse is walking distance for kids.
It was there.
Yeah, awesome.
That's, that's in the areas for kids. That's awesome, we did a no day about that. All right, does anyone wanna run with field, cause I probably what we need to do with fields is like, a list of like, how's the parking, how are the facilities, what's the wifi?
Yeah, I can take, I'll I'll take this.
You wanna jump on that one?
Yeah.
And do we have any um thoughts on electronic voting, uh, on an out- outside location, is there any data on that?
The, what I, uh, only anecdotal, you know, I mean, I, I'm, during COVID, um, I know of one town meeting. Which was Ipswich, where they had. I think they had town meeting in maybe like kind of three different places, they had some people outside, and they had some people inside, and like some people in cars.
Okay.
And, um, uh, and they had done a whole test run with their provider, and it was all cool, and then the equipment crashed and did not work. Outside during the town meeting, and they had to quickly distribute, you know, ballots and figure out another way to.
And then one of the things you might need to think about is prioritize, right, which is more important, the space or the the group?
Yeah, yeah, let's go to combat this, actually, I think we need to look at that.
Yeah. That's definitely a Malia question, or C I O.
Yeah, and then what was the other one that I was thinking?
So we had one, we, I'm curious, you talked about town days separately, can you, do we still wanna keep that, or as an idea, just to raise awareness?
Yeah, I'll do that. Yeah, I do. I do, yeah, I'll look at that.
Yeah, the issue with the, with the, uh, with the clickers being outdoors is, um. My rudimentary understanding of the security of these devices is that they operate on radio frequency, and that it's the building. That contains the radio frequency, um, so that, you know, that it it works from a certain. Distance of the, you know, the brain, um, and then, um, it, you know. On the other side of the wall, even if you're within distance, it's it's, your clicker won't work, so.
I I don't know, I mean, it could be that the building contains the access to the the signal.
You know. Yeah.
It could be that the signal between device and the station is encrypted, so even if I can see it, I I can't, I can't.
Yeah, okay.
Are you talking about practical, or are you talking about the security concern?
The security, um, because, um, uh, but it shouldn't matter, because, uh, I think the the radio frequency brain, they're, um. At least the one that we, um, demoed, um, it will only register a vote from. A, uh, serial number clicker.
Yeah.
That it knows that you distributed it, but, you know.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
You just, how how do you like not walk off with them, and I I don't know, it's harder outside, it's just harder.
Okay, so, and then, so that's all I had also for conversation, I see these couple of ideas, but they seem.
One thing, because I wanted to look at, like, the, just a body of work as a starting point, so maybe, is there's probably a separate one of engaging local businesses. I don't know if they just, I don't know if they fall under the same bucket as community groups, but. I didn't know if there was like a different legality or feeling about adding local businesses.
I think they probably love it, I think they would think it's a great opportunity, and they, yeah. Chamber of Commerce is pretty active and would engage them.
Yeah, all right, so why don't we.
There's a partnership too.
Sorry?
The Concord Business Partnership, too, they have monthly meetings that town officials are often at.
Do you guys think there should be a separate, like, right up in here, or just put the businesses?
I think small car, you can do this.
Yeah.
Groups, yes, okay. So Carmen, your own community groups?
Well, I'm one of the community groups to collaborate with, and so who's who's, you're including another.
There's business.
Businesses would count, it's like the business partnership and.
Yeah.
The chamber.
Chamber.
I mean, I'd be happy to, we're members of the chamber, I can.
Yes.
Real lines?
When we do chamber, coffee business?
Um, you mean in terms of finding out who to contact there?
I know who to contact.
Oh, yeah.
Cause we're members, so.
Yeah, um, sure, but but may- maybe you and I will work on the list together.
And so the list of, I, we are, you and I, in that communication strategy, have a list of a lot of those community groups.
Right.
We're not starting from scratch, we've got it all there.
Right, no reason to start from scratch.
So this just, um, I don't know how I just thought of this, the M C I Concord Advisory Board has created a list of stakeholders. It's a really big list of like one hundred town-wide boards committees, community groups, youth sports.
That was perfect.
Have contacts for those people.
How do we get it?
I think I think this.
I think you just.
I think I could just hand this over to you guys too.
That would be great.
That would be great.
I, my brain is working across all the committees.
That's great. I think that would be great.
All right, cool, is, are there any that I've missed, any big ones, you think?
Nope, that's what I had for them, so we have five of those.
Yeah, so then, I guess the ask is, fill this out, and fill this out at the level of like, you know, local community groups, you don't have to put the list in here. The the action I would be like, gather the full list, have the short form content, decide how to engage them, how much money is it gonna cost, probably zero dollars, you know what I mean? But it has the prerequisites of the right content, you know what I mean, like, I don't want you guys to go do. A ton of work, and then we come back together and people, you know, for one reason or another, we don't end up wanting to do this. Can you take a minute and just, uh, while we're in public, as it were, and just walk through the beats of that document again? Yeah, absolutely, so, project debrief.
Can you make it bigger?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I also am open to feedback on this document, I threw it together, um. The idea would be, so in the case of community groups, uh, what are the deliverables, and then what is a prerequisite, right? So, we have to go with specific content, and we have to go with specific asks on these community groups, we can't just simply. Ask them to help us in a haphazard way, what would be the next steps, I didn't fill these in yet, but it would be like, gather the list, and then. Build the team who's gonna do the work, you know, cause one person probably shouldn't have to do all of them on their own kind of thing.
Or is it just adding timelines, somebody can hatch items on timeline or something?
Oh, timeframe. Um.
Oh, I see, anyway, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, just kind of moving through it, like, high level, what are the pros and cons, I think in this case, I'd see the call a little bit of time. Um, expected workload, right, to actually make this happen, I think in the case of, if we all got excited about an outdoor location, that would be. Many, many, many hours of work, as opposed to engaging community groups, which is probably under thirty hours of work total, that kind of thing. Thirty's a lot too, actually, and aren't there? Yeah, well, I mean, compared to building a tower out there, so, you know, that's probably hundreds of hours of work. Um, budget requirements, if you think there are any that are, I guess, probably worth saying that. Incremental to what is already going to happen, you know, so if it's outdoor location, like. Outdoor bathroom facilities would be net new spend that wouldn't exist before, things like that. And then timeframe, timeframe and timeline is probably worth distinguishing, only because maybe we wanna call certain things out, it's like totally unrealistic for this year. And so maybe it's like a timeframe built towards it, but. However you're thinking about time as it pertains, the way that I would think about the local community groups would be like, we need to have this all done, ready to execute by April. Because that's really, you know, we don't wanna do it now, cause that's too soon, we don't wanna wait till early June, that's too late.
The unfortunate time, the unfortunate aspect of all this for this year is that April is, every volunteer in Concord is already engaged all through March and April on the two fifty. And so the energy that we would need to sustain that with the same people who are the volunteers in their neighborhoods and in their community. Are maxed out this year.
So.
So let's cancel the celebration.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and then the.
Two sixty's gonna be amazing.
Two fifty-one.
That's right, that's right.
Oh, yeah, this really will, this is fifteen ten.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Uh, so we just needed where to talk about town meeting two hundred and fifty years ago.
I think we did that already once this last year, the town meeting over to fifty?
I bet, I bet town meeting two hundred and fifty.
Oh, yeah.
So how old is, how old is?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundreds.
Do we have a date?
Um, I'm act- I actually went to the library to research that precise question today, and they told me to talk to the archivist, who is, um.
Sixteen? Sixteen twenty-five?
Nate in the town clerk's office, so I'm sending him an email tomorrow.
Maybe it's sixteen twenty-five, and we could say it's four hundred.
It wouldn't be, yeah, it's twenty-five, the town was founded in sixteen thirty-five.
I have an email from him. I may have an email from him.
I guarantee they have it, okay.
I know, yeah.
Town meeting history from Nick.
Chase, we got it, I think so, uh, everyone else from the public, I know we, there's some folks on, too.
No, no.
No.
Oh, I'm scouting you.
So, so, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, the time is eight forty-six, and I will declare this meeting concluded, thank you.